Call to order, the May 17th City Council meeting. First item, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick reminder to the community that we are back live meeting, so we will not be answering any questions throughout the meeting. All right, rules of order, the council operates with Robert's Rules of Order and any other orders that we adopt during our organizational meeting. Item four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meetings, March 15th, 2021 regular meeting, which was tabled at the 4/19/2021 council meeting, and April 19th, 2021 regular meeting.
So I guess I move to approve the March 15th, 2021 meeting?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the March 15th, 2021. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Move to table April 19th, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And I should note that all councils are present. City managers' report. Manager Moser.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Councillors. First off, I'd like to send out a special thank you to Trooper Bob Burke of the Maine State Police and the members of the Maine State Police Color Guard for all their assistance organizing and facilitating the funeral services yesterday for Deputy Chief Bobby Dorr. I was in attendance, and I'm certain that many of you were as well, and I thought it was very tastefully done and an outstanding representation for our city in an otherwise terrible time. Also, I'd like to thank, on behalf of the City of Ellsworth, its citizens and the fire department, the Waterville Fire Department, Rockland Fire Department, Southwest Harbor, Bar Harbor, LeMoyne, Dedham, Lucerne, Orland, Brewer, Sullivan, and many others who provided manpower to cover our station while our firefighters were mourning the loss of their brother. So thank you to all those stations, departments, and the Maine State Police for everything they did for the City of Ellsworth yesterday. Onto better news, we have a Memorial Day parade coming up on Monday, May 31st. The VFW has reached out and has put in a parade request, and we'll be holding the traditional parade and Memorial Day service here at City Hall, out on the lawn, for folks to participate and watch. And that'll be on May 31st, Memorial Day. And we're looking, very much looking forward to having a parade once again. The school budget validation voting is June 8th. Absentee ballots are currently available. And I also wanted to add that we will be doing a graduation parade, much like you saw last year, for the seniors graduating from Ellsworth High School, and that will be on June 3rd. And I believe that's slated to start at 5:30. And it will be a car parade that will start at the Main Coast Mall and go through High Street, down Main Street, out State Street to the high school, where they will be observing their class night afterwards. And then graduation will be on the 11th at Ellsworth High School. And just one other topic that I just wanted to touch base on, which we will be talking more about later in the meeting, but I just want to touch base on the upcoming road closure of Franklin Street, and slated to begin on Monday, May 24th, at 7:00 a.m., and it'll run through September 7th. And that's for the creation of an outdoor space for our downtown diners and shoppers alike to utilize. And the city will be setting that up with barricades, cement planters, and other things to beautify the area, as well as picnic tables and trash receptacles, recycling receptacles for the public to utilize. That's all I have in my report, sir.
Any questions? All right. We've now moved to item seven, I mean, item six, committee reports. Any councillors attend any committees since the last meeting?
Didn't you attend the EMS committee?
Does John matter? All right ahead. Yeah, no, we met, the EMS committee met, and it's on the agenda later in the item, and reviewed what was available, and we've got the contract on our agenda for later.
Any other committee reports? All right, seeing none. Item seven, it's citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda where citizens can make comments on any item that's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you'll have a chance to speak to that item when it comes up. So I will open the floor to anyone who would like to speak.
My name's Mike Finney.
If you go right to the podium. Yeah.
Yeah, I brought in a petition I had people sign regarding the Collin Road, and I understand Heidi distributed it to each and every one of you. As citizens on that street, that use that street, we would like to see some funding put forth for some permanent upgrades. Road's a continuous muckhole in the spring, dust and potholes the rest of the year. The right of ways need to be cleared, ditches, what few there are, need to be fixed. They're clogged, trees are overgrown. It's a town road with a town public landing. Would like to see some effort put forth that permanently upgrades it. I understand you have some federal money. It'd be a good place to use some of it. A whole lot more people use that than is ever going to use any paved walking trail.
Just, and I'll turn to you, Manager Moser. This has been an issue that's come up in the past, and one of the areas that I think is important, just to clarify, is that particular road and responsibility, and where that begins and where it ends, and who's ultimately responsible. So I don't know if you want to take that, or if we want to have Lisa come up, but I think just a quick summary of that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. I think probably Lisa's better equipped to answer specific questions on it, since she has been dealing with this, because it is, as you stated, an ongoing issue that we've addressed many years, so.
Just to give some facts, just a brief. It doesn't have to be anything in depth. I don't want to get into big discussion, but just to put it out there. If you don't mind. Yeah, if you could.
So, the Collin Road from the Bangor Road to the railroad tracks, the paved section is indeed a city road. From the railroad tracks to the boat launch is, the city has a 33-foot wide easement over the road to maintain for the boat launch, so that we can maintain year-round access to the boat launch, but the city does not own the road. And so we have no responsibility, or, I guess not responsibility is not the right word, but we don't own it. We don't have to do capital maintenance to it. We just have to maintain the road essentially so that people can access the boat launch that the state gave us.
Great. That's all I wanted out there.
Yep.
If this needs to be further discussed at some point, we can, it can come to the council for, as an agenda item. So I just wanted you to have that information as well.
Well, I've heard that story, but if you find, when you can find property pins, 50 feet between property pins, kind of rules out being 33 feet wide. But what maintenance has been done has been quite patchwork. It don't last. I mean, maintenance is maintenance, but just recently, they graded the mud and rocks to crown the road, and they didn't even bother to rake it out. That's not maintenance. That's useless time. It wouldn't take that much to put some real ditches, some cross calvertts, get rid of some trees, burms of dirt everywhere that prevent that from happening. Yeah, maybe you don't want to spend a whole bunch of money and totally rebuild it, but it wouldn't take a whole lot to make it a whole lot more usable, in better condition. I offered that one of the wood contractors would cut the right of way for you, and apparently nobody even wanted to listen. You can't see around most of the corners. The safe sight distance is nonexistent for the most part, as are most ditches. That's not maintenance. That's barely scraping by. And you know what the taxes are down there. Most of it shorefront property. We don't get a whole lot. Ninety-nine out of 100 don't have kids in the school system. If you call the ambulance or fire department, they get lost. You need to do a better job, period. It's a town road. There's a public landing. You keep doing subdivisions. You don't make the subdivisions fix the road. You can't keep doing nothing. You could have done impact fees for all those subdivisions. Didn't do that either. And now you say you don't even have to take care of it. By your own work of plowing it, grading it, sanding it, and running a school bus down it, you made it a public street.
So, thank you for your comments. And I was, we wanted to share that other information, so you had it available. If you can speak to the council, if you'd like to have it on the agenda for a specific item to address.
Well, like I said, I'd like to see some funding put forth, some real honest business effort to make it a better road. There's a lot of people using that, way more than it's supposed to be. If it's a town road that's easily well over 100 traffic per day.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? All right, seeing none. We will move on to presentation of awards. First award, she's not in attendance, but we are presenting award to Cheryl Flanders for five years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library. This certificate says, "The City of Ellsworth proudly presents the Certificate of Service to Cheryl Flanders in recognition of your five years of service to the Ellsworth Public Library. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth." Presented this 17th day of May, 2021. So we'll make sure that gets to her. And then the second award, would like to ask Tina House to come forward. And you've got to remember where to stand if you get in trouble.
So this is a presentation that you had received last month, and we wanted to make sure that the entire community was aware of the award. I'll just read it. Presented to the City of Ellsworth in recognition of the Director of the Year, Tina House, by the Maine Welfare Directors Association, April 2021. And this is an award that her peers selected her from all the communities across the state in terms of how you, the service you provide, your oversight to general assistance, and the impact that it makes. And I know firsthand, in terms of seeing you do some of that work, what incredible work you do in terms of caring for individuals in this community to meet their needs. It's a well-deserved award, and so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, unfinished business. Item number nine, council order number 122005, discussion in action on EMS services within the City of Ellsworth. This was tabled at the December 21st, 2020, January 11th, 2021, February 8th, 2021, March 15th, 2021, and April 19th, 2021, regular council meetings. Manager Moser.
So, you all should have the service agreement. I sent that out today. Heidi did in the agenda packet. And it's what we've discussed a couple of different times, regarding the rates. Start date of July 1. Provides us with EMS services via Northern Light Medical Transport for the next three years. And I'm happy to answer any questions if I can, but we did meet as an EMS committee and discussed this last week. And my hope is that at tonight's meeting, the council will vote to move forward with the service agreement and essentially afford us the opportunity in the next three years to continue our discussions as to where we want to take EMS service in the City of Ellsworth.
We had a little ugly discussion and have had several meetings on this, and it may not be something that everybody in the board agrees with or thinks, or... It's not a perfect world, but this is really the best choice and the only choice we have. We can't not act on it. We can't run the, I feel we can't not act on it and run the risks that it would present to the citizens of Ellsworth having no service. And that's what's going to happen, I'm more than likely, if we don't. So at this point, this is the, actually only and best solution we've got, is to go ahead and agree with it, even though each one of us has bits and pieces of it we like or dislike, and try to provide, to the best of our ability, the best service we can for the people in the City of Ellsworth that will need or might need an ambulance at some time in their life.
I have to admit, I don't like 95% of it. I think it's a overall, a deal that is heavily weighted toward Northern Light, but like Councilor Phillips says, they have us over a barrel. And I will vote for it. I'll hold my nose while I vote for it. But we need to have an ambulance service in Ellsworth for the residents. But I just want, also want the residents to know, if you call a Northern Light ambulance, you may or may not get it right away. They are assigning two ambulances to Hancock County, not to Ellsworth, the entire county. So if you have one in Goolsborough and one in some other far outpost of the county, and there's a call here in the middle of the city, chances are, we're going to wait. And for the money that we're going to lay out to Northern Light, I think that's just, it's a lousy deal, but it's the only deal we have. We have reached out to other firms. There have been no interest whatsoever by any other ambulance firm. So.
And with those two ambulances that are out, if they're out on inter-facility transfers, then they will park what they call a bus. They're going to park an ambulance up in Dedham, which could answer call in Brewer or Ellsworth. Unfortunately, if we don't take this, we get nothing of time being. So, looking at, this just buys us time to look at what we can do to protect the City of Ellsworth.
Just a point of clarification. Our EMS or our firefighters are still required to go out on every single call as well?
Yes, they are.
I'm fully disgusted with the deal, but if you get a ticket, or you won't have an ambulance, so I think we should start just as soon as possible trying to figure out an ambulance service for Ellsworth. And I don't mean wait, I mean soon.
So, I agree with everything that's been said in terms of they're making a decision to contract, and there are certain things in the contract that they're agreeing to and that the city is paying for. So it's important for us to have an opportunity to pay attention to that. And I think it would be helpful that, maybe quarterly, that they come before the City Council to provide an update, so there can be an exchange for the public to be a part of, to understand, meeting those contractual obligations. And then, in fairness, to not only Northern Light, but all ambulances, ambulance services in the state, I think this is probably an issue that goes beyond every ambulance company and is, at some level, at the state level in terms of how these services are funded, because it's leaving communities and people at great risk the way it's designed. And so I certainly hope that people will take that to heart and have some advocacy to address this issue at a place that maybe ultimately can be resolved. What we're dealing with is the contract that we have in front of us and the need to move that forward. And that's where I had some issues with it, but like all has been stated, I certainly will vote in favor of it to make sure that the residents of this community have access to that very needed service.
And as far as this contract goes, Manager has told us that this is the same contract we're using with other towns, so we're not specifically being called out with a unique contract that is just Ellsworth. The terms of it are very similar to what is used in other towns. And the per capita cost is what it is. And if you actually look around the state, it is less than some other towns. They're paying $20 to $40 per capita to have a very similar agreement to a different term, so. It's not a perfect world, but it's the best we've got at this time.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the agreement for emergency medical services with Northern Light Medical Transport for the contract before us.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item 10, council order number 042108, discussion in action on supporting the bike pedestrian path extension project with local support through future funding source, sponsored by Council Blanchett, tabled at the April 19th, 2021, regular council meeting. Council Blanchett, would you like to introduce this?
In several meetings with DOT, the, they have told us that our 20% share for a design of the entire length of the project from Birch Avenue through to High Street, and the building of the first part of that extension from Birch Avenue to Main Street would be approximately $100,000. It would be 20%. And with people needing to get out, people needing sidewalks, families needing places to go with their children, whether it's to walk, whether it's to ride bikes, whatever the reason may be, this is the perfect opportunity. The existing path from Birch Avenue through to Ellsworth Falls, this is the 10th year that we've had it. It is an extremely popular path. It's used by many, many people every day. Well over 100 people a day in the summertime, certainly less in the winter. And it's people of all ages that use it. People of all physical and walkable or non-walkable skills. And to have this path extend to High Street, to me, is just a win-win situation. I know the school uses it for their track team, outdoor track, for some of their practice runs. A lot of kids use it to walk to school and to get home every school day. And I think it's time that we do this. This would mean the abandoning of parts of Spring Street from Main Street to Park Street. All of that would become the path. It would be a 10-foot paved path 15 feet off the rail, the same as what we have now. So, that in a nutshell is where we're at.
Thank you. Council Phillips.
Hey, you talk of discussing with the DOT. Is there any timeline, or we're actually going to see funding for, or a plan?
The, what we've been told, as soon as our share has been approved, then Ellsworth moves out. The build would be within three years.
So we still really don't know what it's going to cost. There's been some research and look. We still don't know what final cost is or what, other than the possible design. And we've got nothing in writing from the state except a promise, correct? Anything in writing?
That is correct. I would suggest that anything in writing will come afterwards, after the approval of the funding. To me, to not fund this is doing a disservice to the community. It will give us that de facto sidewalk on Oak Street as the path runs parallel to Oak. Approximately, I would say they're 200 feet apart. It's a very safe and wide area where, especially little kids, if they want to ride ahead of their parents, they can do so in a very safe manner. And a lot of other communities have it. It's very popular and widely used in those communities. And to keep Ellsworth from having it is, just in my estimation, keeps us in the dark ages. And every town has to have amenities. With amenities, come residents, come businesses. Neither one of those will come without amenities.
Council Blanchett, can you just pull your mic closer? Because I...
I can sit.
Thank you. I just, I guess it doesn't pick up. Council Phillips.
And I'm not disagreeing that it's probably a great idea, and it'll be used. I'm disagreeing with the process. I guess I've not, in as many things as we've been through this council, we knew what we were getting into when we signed up and agreed to something. This is something we have no idea if, when, and what, and what it's going to cost, or any other project with it. The Highway Department, Lisa presented us earlier today. They're working on the road project that the state's going to agree to do some money. We know what that is, and that's something in writing. I see nothing on this, other than discussions or any promises or anything else. So I mean, we're going to sit here and say, yeah, we'll support it with a future funding source. Who the heck knows how much, when or what? I can't imagine that the state doesn't have some kind of a program or something that we'd apply for and say, we want to do this, and then spell something out and give us something tangible instead of a pat in the back or a wink of the eye.
Can I answer some of that, possibly?
And we were hoping to bring this, a more complete picture, to next month's council meeting with staff who have put a lot of time and effort into this planning and have a better understanding of the process going forward. But the $100,000 that we're talking about now is to move the project from what we have now, which is kind of the concept, on to the next phase, which includes engineering for the further extension of it, which is basically from Main Street up to what's now the Sunrise Trail. Because that portion of it is going to require extensive engineering. There's multiple different options that we're exploring. With this $100,000, we're getting the construction phase from where the trail currently ends to that Main Street portion. And then the next phase comes with this investment. Yep, Lisa, go ahead. The next phase will come with the completion and the cost estimates for what is going to continue, the cost to continue it on. Is that accurate?
Lisa, can you hold up just?
Council Captain, you wanted to say something. Do you want this?
Yeah, one of them.
Well, yeah, one of my concerns was it has to be ADA compliant, right?
Yes.
And that requires year-round maintenance?
There, there is a question on that, on the, on, when you say year-round maintenance, you mean plowing?
Plowing, sanding, salting.
That, that's under question.
So?
The, the current path is not.
And then what would be the annual cost to maintain it? And if, if it's not maintained in the winter and it was supposed to be because it's ADA compliant, are we opening ourselves up as a city to liability if somebody slips and falls?
So, these are all the things that we were planning to get some stuff together and come to next month's meeting with because the DOT does have a program through their trails program, which is the same program that funded our PPI to do the study that we just did. That in the application for that program is due in August, so we were hoping to come in next month to ask for the $100,000 match that will match the DOT's 400,000 for a total of half a million to start the engineering as well as the construction part of the first phase. So that's all. The idea is to come next month with that. With that, it's also a example contract that would come with, if we got the funding. There we have an example contract that says what is required for maintenance, and these are all the questions that we are planning to have answers to when we come back next month.
Council Blanchett, would you like to consider tabling this until next month?
Sure.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Yes.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor to table. Item 11, Council Order Number 052100, Request of the Recreation Commission to Accept the Resignation, oh, wait a minute, sorry, back up, scroll too far. Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 11, Council Order Number 052100, Request of the Recreation Commission to Accept the Resignation from Shane Lowell, Term to Expire on June 30th, 2021. Item 12, Council Order Number 052101, Request of the Recreation Commission to Appoint Darren Goldstein, Term to Expire on June 30th, 2022. Item 13, Council Order Number 052102, Request to Accept a Donation of Labor and Materials for the Installation of a Footbridge on the Walking Path in the Shore Road Vicinity. And Item 14, Council Order Number 052103, Request of the Library Board of Trustees to Disband the Library Special Collections Committee. Would any councilors like to remove any of those items? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval is presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. New Business, Item 15, Public Hearing in Action on the Issuance of Business Licenses. First item, Shimbashi Incorporated, DBA Shimbashi Restaurant, 139 High Street for Renewal of a City Class C License Victrola and Liquor and Renewal of Estate Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 Malt, Spiritus and Vinus Liquor License. Everything's in order with all these? Okay. So this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Request of Shimbashi for Renewal Day License.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Charles B. and Ariella L. Zucker, DBA Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road for Renewal of a City Lodging License. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? No comments, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Manny's Greek Grill LLC, 248 State Street Suite N. for Renewal of a City Class C License Liquor and Victrola and Renewal of Estate Restaurant Class 3 and 4 Malt and Vinus Liquor License. This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Manny's Greek Grill.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Brian Langley, DBA Union River Lobster Pot, 8th South Street for Renewal of a City Class C License Victrola and Liquor and Renewal of Estate Restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 Malt, Spiritus and Vinus Liquor License. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Union River Lobster Pot Renewal of the License.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, oh, unanimous.
Mr. Langley, seeing how you're sitting here, what do you plan on opening the doors?
Hoping for around the 5th of June, maybe just a few days after that. Got a lot of things to get in order.
More of a normal year?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Looking forward to seeing you all sitting down at a table this year.
Douglas J. Keim and Rachel E. Wallace, DBA Homestead Motel and Cottages, 143 Bucksport Road for Renewal of a City Lodging License. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Seeing no comments, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor. Any opposed? Council Lions, did you want to vote? Unanimous. All right. Item 16, Council Order Number 052104, Appointment of Suzanne McLean as Tax Collector by the City Council and Confirmation of the Appointment as Deputy Treasurer.
Good evening, Council. Jennifer Merchant, Finance Director. The Finance Office has chosen Sue to serve as the city's tax collector. By state law, this position requires the tax collector to be annually appointed by the municipal officers. Sue came to us from the town of Goolsborough where she was the Deputy Tax Collector, Register of Voters, Freedom of Access Officer and Deputy Clerk. Sue was originally hired to be the tax clerk and has been with the city for six months. And she is here this evening.
Do you want to say anything?
She said it.
Mr. Chairman, move to appoint Suzanne McLean as a Tax Collector, Term to Expire June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 17, Council Order Number 052105, Request of the Public Works Director to Accept MPI Funds from MDOT, a lot of initials, for necessary work on the Christian Ridge Road and authorize the city manager to sign the documents.
Good evening, councilors. So I'm here tonight after a year and a half or so of working with the main DOT, trying to secure funding for redoing a section of the Christian Ridge Road from approximately Bucksport Road to Grant Street. I'm happy to be here tonight to say that we have been approved for funding in 2022, beginning January 1st, 2022. We thought we were going to be on the 2023 list instead of 2022, but somehow we got lucky and got funding for '22. So what I'm requesting is this is a municipal partnership agreement, which is a 50-50 split up to a maximum from the DOT. So their share would be 475,000. Our match would be 475,000 or whatever it costs additionally above and beyond the 950,000. That includes engineering and construction for that section of the road. So I'm here tonight to ask to allow Glenn to sign to get the 475,000 from the state.
Are you anticipating completion next fiscal year by the?
No, so if we don't get money until January 1st, 2022, we'll have to do engineering first, which will be probably 2022, and then we'd be lucky to start construction late 2022 or early 2023.
Okay, so, so we won't start?
So a year to a year and a half before we're actually building it.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the Request of the Public Works Director to go into a municipal partnership agreement with the main DOT for the reconstruction of a portion of the Christian Ridge Road and to allow the city manager to sign required documentation. Funding for this project to be from the local roads capital improvement account, 9090900 59 double oh one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous.
Thank you.
And Item 18, Council Order Number 052106, Request of the Public Works Director to Accept a Bid for the FY 2021 Paving Projects.
Good evening, again, so as we previously discussed in the budget meeting, we did not put out any paving contract in early FY 21. We are now putting out a paving contract for FY 21 to be completed hopefully by July 1st. So on Thursday, we had a bid opening, Thursday, May 13th, sorry, we had a bid opening. We requested six RFPs, but we only two bids were received. There are contractors are fairly busy at this point in time, but we did receive two bids from Eurovia Northeast Paving and Wellman Paving. Eurovia Northeast Paving, used to be Lane, was a little bitter, and so I'm requesting to award the contract to them.
Out of curiosity, what are the, in the unit prices similar to last year, or we started to see?
They are higher, about $10 a ton higher, $10 to $15 a ton higher.
I think it's only going to continue to creep. Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the Request of the Public Works Director to Award the Fiscal Year 2021 Maintenance Paving Contract to Eurovia Northeast Paving for the attached pricing. Contract amount to be funded from the local roads capital improvement account, 9090900 59 double oh one. Sounds familiar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've come to the portion of the agenda that's very confusing when it comes to a motion. Thanks, Dan. So Item 19, this is a public hearing in action on Council Order Number 052107, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2022. Madam Clerk, we vote on when we get to that portion all at once, or do we, isn't there one that we pull out?
The ones through four require a document, or like a document, if they're all.
Record it, vote. Okay, all right. So let me read them so the public knows, and then I'll open up the public hearing. So A is Order Approving State Local EPS Funding Allocation for Public Education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2022. B, Order Approving Non-State Funded School Construction Debt Service Ellsworth Schools for FY 2022. C, Order Raising and Appropriating Additional Local Funds for Ellsworth Schools FY 2022. D, Order Approving Total School Operating Budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2022. E, Order Appropriating and Raising Funds for Adult Education for FY 2022 as required by the main revised statutes Title 20-A MRSA, Section 8603-A1. F, Order Raising Local Funds for Food Service, Umi Ellsworth Public Schools for FY 2022. G, Order Authorizing Expenditure of Grants and Other Receipts for School Department Programs. And H, Order Authorizing Disposition of Additional State Funding for Public Schools for FY 2022 in the Event of an Increase. So I will turn it over to you, Superintendent Higgins, for an overview and then get into the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. Manager Moser, Chair Hamilton, council members and citizens of Ellsworth. On behalf of the school board and the school department, I'm pleased to present the FY 22 Ellsworth School Department Budget this evening. A question, Chair Hamilton, I received a message from you earlier. I know I gave a fairly detailed presentation at our April 12th meeting. I am prepared to go through a fairly detailed presentation again this evening. I can also provide you with the highlights of the changes, and I believe you have received documentation earlier today.
Yeah, I would think that's starting with the highlight of the changes and then we can go from there.
And how detailed, at 110 degrees in here that we need tonight.
What's that?
I don't think we need it too detailed, if it gets any hotter in here.
It is warmer and there's a good ballgame on at 8 o'clock.
Yeah.
But again, thank, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Since our presentation to you folks on April 12th, the school board and the school staff has been working very hard to go through the budget and come up with a final document, which was approved by the Ellsworth School Board unanimously on April 27th. What I would ask is for members of the council, simplicity sake, the spreadsheet that was sent to you that has down in the bottom right-hand corner, .06%, that's a document I'm going to refer to, okay? And that is a little bit of foreshadowing, that's okay. Since we last met, maybe just a couple of pieces. One is, this budget that was approved on April 27th is based upon budget that was approved by the state main legislature back at the end of March and is reflected in the April 5th 8279 subsidy documents. Since we last met with you folks, we've updated our tuition revenues based upon the completion of the recruiting process by Ellsworth High School staff, HCTC staff. We've gone through our annual nickel and dime process. I like to smile when I say that, you can't see it under the mask, but I smile because nickeling and diming is kind of a fun process to go through. I'm sure you folks do that when you're doing budgets as well. The focus areas still include staffing to meet enrollment shifts, trends and student needs, to address increased needs for students, trauma, social, emotional needs, the proposed addition of a new program at HCTC cybersecurity. I'm pleased to announce that we've got fairly good-sized enrollment for a program that's starting off in its first year, and ongoing support for our facilities and maintenance For folks in the community to remember, it's important to know that funds to support the Ellsworth School Department budget come from the following sources: state support in the form of subsidy allocations and debt service reimbursement. And I would make note that the document you have tonight is based upon the budget that was approved at the state level at the end of March. It does not include anything with regard to Governor Mills' proposed updated budget. I can take any questions on that a little bit later tonight if you'd like, but the numbers that I'm presenting tonight are based upon that budget. The other source of funds to support school department operations are tuition revenues from communities who pay their resident students to choose to attend Ellsworth Schools and local citizen support through property tax revenues. I'm going to start with the revenue section, so please look to the bottom half of the sheet. The mill rate applied to this budget is 7.9 mils, rated against our valuation, which requires that the city raise $8.599 million as a local contribution required so that we can receive full state subsidy. That represents a decrease of over $82,000 from last year. Additionally, we will see an increase of $161,679 in subsidy for pre-K through grade 12 education. We will also see, because the state provides support for career and technical education programs, an increase of $35,990.47, which is just under 1.7 million to support that program. A place that has changed, and I would invite you to look at the tuition and the CTE assessment lines, about halfway down to the revenue section. When we presented to you back on April 12th, we were looking at approximately $111,000 increase in tuition payments for our school. Through the final process and the final recruiting process, we found that we're going to see a projected $152,000 increase in tuition revenues. So that will offset the local assessment. Additionally, if you look at the CTE assessment line, you're going to see an increase of That actually is a little bit lower than what we presented the last time around, and I will get to that. The reason that's a little bit lower of an increase, or a little bit less of an increase, is because we found some budget reductions, which I'll explain at HCTC. So it's still a positive when you're looking at the fact that there will be increased revenues coming into the assessment line. Another place that I would ask you to look for in the revenue section is down at adult education. When we were here on April 10th, we were looking at about a $79,000 increase. We found some budget reductions. When we were here on April tenth, we were looking at about a seventy-nine thousand dollar increase. We found some budget reductions. We're also going to apply thirty-five thousand dollars of fund balance to offset expenditures in adult education. Those will represent the changes on the revenue side of the budget. With regard to the expenditure side, if you move back to the top, in regular instruction, you're going to see an increase of six point oh nine percent. The reason that that is twelve thousand dollars higher, what we found in going through the budget again, was that the expansion of the pre-K program to be five days a week, full day, was not included in there. It's about twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars. But we also found a twelve thousand dollar reduction when we went through a successful bid process for the replacement of Chromebooks for student one-to-one computing at Ellsworth High School. So you're showing a twelve thousand dollar increase on that line. Career and technical education is another place where there were changes. First, I mentioned the cybersecurity program. When we met with you back in the beginning of April, that program included costs for renovation of the facility, supplies and equipment, and a full-time instructor. Through our work with the University of Maine at Augusta, the University of Maine at Augusta is really a proponent of cybersecurity programs. They are going to provide a full-time instructor for us to serve our students virtually. So we've taken that full-time position out of the budget, and we're replacing it with a point five full-time equivalent, ed tech level position with technology experience, to be with the students on site. So that results in a reduction in the cost for that program. The other thing that has happened since we last met, program that we started a couple of years ago, Marine Trades Program at Mountain Desert Island High School, the decision has been made to suspend that program for one year. Through the recruiting process, we were not finding there was suitable enrollment to continue that program. So that results in a reduction of sixty-seven thousand dollars in the budget. The other thing that offsets that is, because that's a program for which we receive subsidy, the subsidy calculation had to be adjusted. So we're seeing a reduction of thirteen thousand six hundred dollars in subsidy. But that's why you look and see instead of a hundred and forty thousand dollar, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in CTE, you're talking about a forty thousand dollar increase. Those really represent the significant changes since the last time that we talked. One thing that I do want to mention, food services, we talked about an increase there the last time. There's, there's one more piece that we're working on. As you know, when we did the budget last year, we base our projected revenues on what we expect to have for lunch sales. Certainly when we were preparing the budget last year, we were hoping we'd be back in school full-time. Obviously, we've spent the bulk of our year with half or less than half of our students in school on a daily basis. As a result, revenues to support the food service program are lower than what we had projected. Two weeks ago, we did an estimate of what we might need to transfer from the general fund to make that program whole for the year. It's approximately ninety-three thousand dollars that we may have to transfer. And again, please understand, when you have half of your students coming in that you expect paying for lunch, even though the state reimbursed at a higher level, you do not have the revenues necessary to support the program. Even though we did spend less money on food and equipment, there's still a gap to make up. The positive news on, on that front is that since we've come back to five-day instruction with the majority of our students, we're seeing a pretty healthy uptick in those revenues. I expect that ninety-three thousand dollar amount to come down. It's unfortunate, but it's one of those things that school systems across the state are dealing with. It's unavoidable, but I think it's something that our board certainly knows about. I think the council and the citizens need to be aware of it as well. Moving forward for next year, the budget that we have is anticipating having all of our students back in school in the fall. We're basing it on the traditional reimbursement of funds that we receive from the Department of Ed. Our understanding is there is going to be a bit of a higher level next year, similar to what's in place this year. So hopefully that's going to help make up for the deficit this year. All things being told with the changes, when we presented to you back in April, we were expecting to have an increase in the local appropriation of City of Ellsworth of about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. With the work that we've done since April twelfth, the budget that was approved by the board, what we're looking at is a total local appropriation on the part of our citizens of eleven million five hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred five dollars and seventy-six cents, or an increase of sixty-three hundred dollars over what was appropriated last year. And that's as reader's digest as I can do for you.
Wonderful job.
Thank you, Councilor.
Quick question. On the food service.
Yes.
Have they, for whatever reason, I don't believe they've been charging for lunches at school.
Yep. What changed, Councilor Kaplan, what changed this year was through the school lunch program, law was passed that the state would reimburse all students who receive lunch. We would get a reimbursement for all of them. So in essence, our students, our community members are receiving their lunches for free, but we're getting a reimbursement for the state to offset that. Even with that, we were still only feeding roughly half of the students that are enrolled in our schools because they were coming every other day.
So let me just ask you a quick question. Let's say you have a parent that last year didn't want to get any notes from school, so sent like five hundred dollars to MySchoolBucks and hasn't been charged for a lunch since then. Does that just sit there indefinitely?
It sits there in some cases, and probably a better way to explain is we've had some situations where families have paid ahead on MySchoolBucks.com and say that they move away. They ask us for a refund. It's simply a matter of contacting our food service director, Ray Daly. He'll verify that, and he will refund people those funds. So if you have someone that has that concern, please have him contact Mr. Daly.
Other questions? Councilor.
Just a couple of things for clarification. So when will you get the final figures for the state funding? You said it was March. You're using what you were told in March. When do you get those final figures?
You're talking the subsidy figures?
Yes.
Right now, these are the final figures. What we don't know is, you know, as we all know, the governor has proposed an updated budget. There's supposed to be a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars for general purpose aid. On the municipal side, my understanding is there's also supposed to be some revenue sharing. Fingers crossed, right? We won't know those final figures. I can give you an estimate of it today, but we won't know the final figures until the legislature actually votes to approve a budget that has changed. Earlier this afternoon, and again, I want to be cautious on putting numbers out, but they're out there because there's no guarantee this is what's going to happen. With the budget that has been proposed, the mechanics of how the increase to schools would be as follows. A hundred and eighty-seven million dollars would commit the state to reaching fifty-five percent of the cost of education across the state, which was voted on what seems like eons ago. It would not increase your total allocation for education. What it would do, however, is decrease the required local contribution of a municipality, the required local contribution, mill rate expectation on the sheet, and increase your state subsidy allocation by the same amount. So what we saw for information late this afternoon, timing really wasn't good, would have been nice to have a little more time, was a reduction in the mill rate from seven point nine to seven point two six mils. So in running those numbers, you'd be talking about a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar decrease in required local allocation. And that's, that's the line that says mill rate expectation. You would see a similar increase dollar for dollar on the line that says state subsidy allocation. And again, those, those were numbers that were posted about three thirty this afternoon. Just when the final judgment is made on that is when the legislature votes. Now, there is, there is an item in here, and I know we're going to have a conversation. I'm looking at Councilor Blanchett because for seven years, we've had this same discussion.
He beat you to it.
Well, I, I know. But the, the one piece on that is, and it's appreciated that the council has always looked at it this way. It gives you three options. One is you could expend additional dollars in cost centers. You could put those additional funds into reserve accounts that are approved, or you could reduce the local allocation. The Warren article is on there, or the council order is on there, so that there is that option. Because obviously, you know, you need to take action this evening. You've got a budget validation referendum in June. You know, we, we can't wait. It could be June, it could be statutory adjournment date before the budget is approved at the state level. But that, that article on there does give the opportunity to talk about it, and I think it was last year, I'm looking at Councilor Blanchett, but I'm going to look at Councilor Phillips too. I think Councilor Phillips said, I'd like to listen to Dan this year, and we could have the conversation when the time comes if we get more money. Just a little plug, Councilor Phillips. So Heather, that probably was more of an answer than, excuse me, Councilor Grindel, that was probably more of an answer than you needed, but.
No, that helps. Also, I looked real quick at the reports that were sent, and I apologize, I really looked at them quickly. It looks like there's about three point three million unspent, or will be unspent at the end of the year, or maybe I misunderstood what.
That, that actually has current expenditures. When we reported to you back on April twelfth, what we did is an exercise in our office to try to get projected ending balances. Back on April twelfth, we were just over two million. It'll be a little bit lower than that now because we've had some additional expenditures. But that, that's all factored into the decision to put one point eight million towards fund balance.
Okay.
And also, as I recommended, consideration of some amounts to put into reserve accounts to help position us for the future. Again, the final audit has not been returned yet, so I didn't want to make that recommendation tonight, although we're highly confident of the figures that we put forth.
And can, I remember the, you had a number of different reserve accounts. Is that, can you just give me a quick number of what we'll go, what you're anticipating putting in there?
Absolutely. What we're looking at right now would be into a special education reserve, a hundred and fifty thousand, into a minor capital reserve, two hundred thousand, and either into a general education reserve or an HCTC minor capital projects reserve, a hundred thousand, total of four hundred and fifty.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would still help us to manage fund balance moving forward because, you know, as you folks know, FY twenty-one budget, we applied one point three two million. We're projecting applying one point eight million for the next budget. We're able to do that because the last two years, we've expended less money than was budgeted. In great part due to the pandemic, you know, and everyone else. This year, we've had terrible time finding staff. We can't sustain those levels of fund balance in perpetuity.
Yeah, I just wanted, while you're saying that, just echo that. Last year, as you said, one point three million, we're going to have one point eight. I think it's just something to keep in mind, and hopefully the fifty-five percent will be funded, and there'll be close to seven hundred thousand dollars available to, to think about, because that will be a pretty significant increase next year. Because the assumption is you're going to be spending the entire budget. The pandemic certainly impacted that. So it's just something to be aware of it going forward, that we've increased that allocation quite a bit, and depending on whether it's next year or the year after, we've talked about this. We've got to have some sort of softer landing, or else it's going to be a big hit on, on the bottom line in the future.
And, and, you know, right now, I'll knock on wood, you know, things are starting to look promising. You know, if you look at traffic here in town, there are people all over the place. It's wonderful to see. There's a lot of activity taking place. Even with that, you know, the caution that we have is the next couple of fiscal years could present challenges. And I think it's, it's imperative that we look forward, continue to look at it from a more of a long-range basis, so that we don't have that cliff that people are afraid of.
Other questions?
I, I was wondering, you, before you talked about the COVID funds that you had.
Yep.
How much of that is still left? And what can be done with that? Anything, obviously not budgeting-wise, you said you have to kind of figure out unique ways to get rid of it, right?
Well, I think back in the, back in the fall, Councilor Lyons, when we had a timeframe of having to expend it by December thirtieth, we found ways to support keeping our schools open and keeping our schools safe. I guess you could call them creative, but they really met our needs. I guess the way I would answer your question is this way. There've been several sets of funds that have come forth. The first one was called Coronavirus Relief Fund One, CRF One, one point two five seven million dollars. That was the one that was last spring. We've expended all of that. Coronavirus Relief Fund Two, one point three one million dollars. We've expended the bulk of that. I know it's a lot of hot air up here, Councilor Blanchett, I know. I'm doing my best. Another source of funds was CRF Two, a reallocation. This was a place where we were given the opportunity in the CRF Two application to say, it was a question that actually said, if you think you might need a little bit more money, tell us how much you'd like to have. We asked for two hundred thousand dollars more. We were able to buy another bus, a truck, vans to supplement our fleet. There was also a CRF Day Programming, which helped us support the daycare program and the remote learning program at the Moore Center, three hundred and one thousand dollars. We've expended a good portion of that. We're probably going to have to send some of that back because with the reopening of school and bringing more students back, there are fewer students there that can be built for. Adult education, we also received CRF funds for that, sixty-five hundred dollars. We've expended all of those. What remains right now is what's known as ESER Two, a lot of acronyms, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And ESER Three, which is like the American Recovery Program funds, which is one point nine million. Those are funds that we're still looking at what the final requirements are, but some of the things that we're looking at are what kinds of staffing will we need next year to help students recover with any learning loss that they may have had, to support social, emotional, mental health, to support physical health, you know. We're all expecting as we move forward for the pandemic to end, for us to get back to normal. We need to make sure that we have pieces in place, that we have PPE, that we have staffing to support us moving forward. Those are the types of things we're looking at for those funds. The thing that's good about those last two sets of funds is the deadline on those goes out to two thousand twenty-three and I believe two thousand twenty-four. So we can use them to support our schools, to supplement what we're doing. We can't replace what's in the budget to supplement those things.
So I've always been taught that the only dumb question is the one that doesn't get asked, right? So, and this is probably a dumb question.
No such thing.
But I'm going to ask it. Like with Mark wanting, you know, the trail, and the kids use the trail, I'm assuming with the new mountain bikes that you bought, you're going to be riding on that trail. Is there any way that any of those funds could go towards cars on that trail?
I don't know, but I don't think so, because we, we haven't seen the final pieces on the last set, the, the almost two million dollar. Everything we've had from the other sources of funds has been, it has to be directly related to COVID, keeping your, your schools open and safe. You might be able to make that argument. I'm, I'm making a mental note of it.
Yeah. The other dumb question is with parts of the area that are, you know, lagging in broadband, any of them funds could go anything towards that?
I don't know with any particular broadband project, but we, we've actually expended quite a number of funds to make sure that all of our students have connectivity. We've purchased a lot of hotspots. We've purchased, we've spent a lot of money to make sure that all of our kids are able to get connected.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like up in the Route one seventy-nine area, there's a big section of that where kids live that doesn't, yeah.
If, if it's a case where we could get, you know, for example, I know back in the spring, there were some districts that would take a school bus, put a hotspot on it, and park the school bus in one of those areas, so that families that live there could get access to remote learning. If it was something connected to that, I think we could make it work. If it's something, the fund's something that's not directly connected to the school, we wouldn't be able to.
Like I said, I knew they'd be dumb questions.
Nope, no, no, they're not.
Council Kaplan.
You keep referring to social, emotional, and mental health. Could you define what that means more specifically?
Sure. We're looking at, hoping to use these funds to hire a board-certified behavioral analyst, which would support our special ed program. Special ed students were hit particularly hard with only being able to come to school every other day, in some cases, difficulty in accessing their programs. In addition to challenges academically, a lot of students that were in those programs experienced some emotional challenges. Those are the types of things we're looking at. So we're looking at professional development for our staff, so that we can make sure that we're providing services. Supplementing our guidance program, supplementing our social worker program, to make sure that students, as they come back to school, as they continue to be in school, have access to those services. Those are the types of things we're talking about. Over the, excuse me, over the summer program, you know, we're not finding a lot of desire for summer school. I think a lot of families, a lot of kids would like a break from school, and it's understandable. It's been a long, difficult year, a long, difficult fifteen months for everybody. Some of the things we're looking at are using these funds to provide opportunities. to provide opportunities for summer camp, for some of those types of activities that gives kids some social and emotional growth and development, and a little break from the academics.
Let me just quick follow up on that. And this is, I want to be very clear. This is not directed at you or the school board. You have been following the rules that were put in front of you, and you've had no choice but to do that. So just to be very clear. When we talk about this issue, I just find it remarkable that here we sit with millions of dollars being funneled in because we need to address what has become a very significant concern, emotional and mental health needs of children because we closed our schools down and the way that we did it in the state and other states. And I certainly hope that in the future that there's more consideration around that type of impact so that we can have a honest debate and discussion to determine what's in the best interest of our kids in the context of, in this case, a pandemic and the facts and the information that was available. Because it is, in my opinion, a travesty that we are now sitting here talking about the fact that a large number of kids need extra support because of the toll of this pandemic. And in my opinion, some of that's based on decisions that have been made not by you or at the school board. And in fact, I give your school board, your administrators, and the teachers incredible credit for what they've done to support the kids, getting them back into the school system. They deserve a lot of recognition. But I just wanted to follow up on that because it's just astounding that we sit here talking about all this money because of a problem that we have created.
And we're still working on, one of the biggest challenges to reopening completely, fully. And again, we've brought back all the students, the exception of two grades that want to be back. It's still the challenge of having to make sure that you are six feet apart when you're eating. That's one piece that hasn't changed. We received some changes that came out last, actually were published this morning, health and safety guidelines, that we can open things up a little bit more. That's one piece that hasn't changed yet.
Couple of questions. Are you going to require vaccinations for 12 and up?
No.
Right. And then the other question is, any of this emotional health geared towards combating the opioid epidemic? I mean, they start in high school, so...
Yep. A lot of the resources that our guidance and social work people have put together are looking at all causes of anything social, emotional, and certainly substance abuse is part of that. And as we all know, throughout this pandemic, that's something that increased in a lot of places. So, yeah, that's a part of it.
Counsel Blanchett, do you want to do your annual announcement before we get into the motions?
Right now, the option is given to the school department on, this is on H, disposition of additional state subsidy.
We're talking that one council order that we discuss every year?
Yes.
Okay. No, the, and I think we had this conversation maybe three or four years ago. We actually did receive some funding. And I think we presented, the school board presented the council with three or four different scenarios. And we ended up, I want to say there might have been like 140,000 or 150,000 additional dollars.
130 came in.
And we ended up putting 75% of that towards reducing the local assessment and 35,000 to fund, and I don't remember what it was. But it was a conversation. It was not, it was not superintendent coming back, school department coming back saying, this is what we're going to do. You know, if the numbers that I presented to you in response to Counsel Grindel's question come to pass, you know, we're talking a pretty significant amount of money.
Yeah.
I think it's a case where, you know, looking forward. If you were to put all of that towards reducing the local assessment, I'm a taxpayer, I would like that. But I think we also have to look forward to how we want to manage moving forward. So I would look at it this way, and I would advocate for this. If that's the budget that passes, I think there needs to be a conversation. You know, certainly there are a lot of things that we have that we would advocate for, some of them that we have put into ESER, the ESER application that we haven't been able to file yet, that could be in the local budget. But I also think we need to make sure that we do put a portion of that towards reducing the local appropriation. I think it needs to be a conversation on what's in the best interest of our community, what's in the best interest of our schools, what's in the best interest of our taxpayers.
Do you have a percentage in mind?
No. No, like I say, I just saw this number for the first time at 3:30 this afternoon. And if I could go back, Counsel Kaplan, you asked a question about mandating vaccine. We have not mandated or required, but we have made available to our staff and to our students who are eligible opportunities to get the vaccine. You know, we actually have a clinic on site tomorrow for students who are age 16 and above. We'll be sending communication out to parents tomorrow for a clinic next week for students ages 12 and up. It'll be housed right in our schools.
Just to follow up on that. Now, if those students do get fully vaccinated, will they be required to wear a mask at school?
Until the rules that we're told we have to follow change, yes.
Counsel Lyons?
I've scratched my head on that because when, you know, you hear the national announcement, but then you also see it follows very clearly. This does not apply to schools, so...
So I have one more question. This goes out to the voters to approve. Okay, so say they did not approve your budget. Have you thought about what would have to be cut? I'm just trying to get an idea of the people in actually in your favor because if they see that you have to cut important programs...
We're at the point where we were able to include in this budget some additional staff to support increased enrollment. You know, when you look at a budget like this, between 65% and 85% of it comes to support costs for staff. Depending upon, well, let me go back a step. If the voters at the Budget Validation Referendum vote not to approve the budget, they don't get to tell us how much they'd like to see cut. We have to go back and go through the process and come back with a figure. But to answer your question, yes. You know, we've gone through a prioritized list. That's how we came to the figures that we're presenting this evening. If we have to make further reductions, we're probably going to be looking at staff and programs. And I hope that's not the case, you know. I won't go through the whole list I did at the meeting on the 12th, but you know, we've really come in with budgets that do not provide a significant increase to the local tax base on an annual basis. You know, last year, we ended up with a tiny decrease. This year, we're talking a $6,000 increase overall. I hope that our voters will take a look at our track record and say, you know, as a Department of the City, your school department has put together budgets that are responsible. I sincerely hope that that's the case, Counsel Lyons. But yes, to answer your question, yep, we have.
All right.
Hope we don't have to go to that list, but...
No, it looked to me, it looks to me like you guys did a lot of hard work getting to where you're at, so...
So this is a public hearing, so I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody want to speak on the school budget? No? Close the public...
Swarming.
You know. Public hearing is closed. Further discussion? All right, so this is the complicated part of getting these motions correct with the right numbers, since it has changed a bit. Well, it's complicated for us. But I'll speak for me, it's complicated for me. So, let's do our best.
Have these numbers changed? Or no? These are actual that are in here?
The...
I'm sorry. Have the numbers that are in the packet changed? For each?
The, the numbers, and I'll follow down through. The numbers that are on, what was in your packet today should reflect what's in this budget. Nothing has changed.
Okay.
I think you can send that extra form of weather.
Oh, I, yep. The spreadsheet, yes. No, the numbers that are in your packet, this is Grindel and I worked pretty hard on this to make sure that we had everything right. I think that's a fair statement, isn't it?
All right, so as, as the motion's made, if you can listen to make sure we get it correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll try that again. So as the motion's made...
Counsel of Blanchett's looking at me. I can't make a motion. I can make a motion, but...
Looking at the... Mr. Chairman will start. Move to approve City Council Order 052107A, order that the city will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, recommended 8,599,676.67. And to see what sum the municipality will raise is the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with Maine Revised Statutes Title 28, Section 15, 688. The recommended amount is 8,599,676.67. Second.
You have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Council Order 052107B, order that the city will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state-funded school construction projects or non-state-funded portions of school construction projects in addition to the funds appropriated as a local share of the school's administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12. The recommended amount is 83,059.34.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, you want to take over for a head chumming? Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve City Council Order Number 052107C, order that the city of Ellsworth raise and appropriate in additional local funds which exceeds the state's essentials program and services allocation model as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board. The school board recommends 2,463,536.36 for additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by that same amount. This amount is needed to cover the school department's expenses that are not recognized or fully funded by the state's funding model, facilities maintenance costs, special education costs, technology costs, transportation costs, professional development costs, and system administration cost. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Please, thank you.
Can I just clarify? The additional local article, and I think this is a good historical piece. When Essential Programs and Services was first passed into law, the philosophy behind it was that the total allocation that's listed in your subsidy line is a representation of what high-quality school districts expend as a baseline amount. Along the way between when that was passed back, mid-2005, 2006, forward, it was changed where Central Programs and Services became an expenditure ceiling. So philosophically, it changed. That's the reason that you see additional local dollars. These are funds that are needed to support operations of the school.
Any questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the total budget article as required by Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A, Section 156904A. A school administrative unit must include a summary article indicating the total amount, the total annual budget for funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12 in the school administrative unit. The amount recommended must be the gross budget of the school system. This article does not provide money unless the other articles are approved. City Council Order Number 052107D, orders that the city of Ellsworth will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state-funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The recommended amount is 23,437,190.48. Second.
You have a motion and a second.
You guys are doing great.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
No confusion whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve City Council Order 052107E, order that the city of Ellsworth appropriate for adult education and raise 243,787.19 as the local share with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve City Council Order 052107F, order that the city authorize a sum of 179,546.19 is hereby raised for all other expenditures as the food service program for fiscal year 2021 and 22, and that the Ellsworth School Department is authorized to expend any unexpended balances and additional incidental miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the food service program. Second.
Motion and a second. Counsel Kaplan?
The amount on the worksheet is 176,546.19. Is this a typo?
On the bottom half of that, yeah, that's a typo. Should be 179.
176.
Halfway down on the revenue section says 176, that's a typo.
Yeah, 176.
Should be 179, which is what's reflected in your council order.
So it should be 176, Dan?
Nope. Should be 179.
It's what you read.
It's what you read. The typo is my...
The order's correct, the spreadsheet's incorrect.
Yep. Half the spreadsheet's incorrect. If you look at the top on the expenditure side, it has the correct figure for food service. It's half a typo.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve City Council Order Number 052107G, order that in addition to amounts approved for the fiscal year 21, 22 school operating budget, the school board be hereby authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not appropriated for the school operating budget. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve City Council Order Number 052107H, order that in the event that Ellsworth School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, the school board be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes in car center categories approved by the school board, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board, and/or decrease the local car share expectation as defined in Title 20A, Section 15671A, subsection 1, section B, or local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify for the public, Mr. Higgins, exactly what this says in layman's terms, please.
What this says is if, by action of the legislature, additional funds in the form of state subsidy are sent to the Ellsworth School Department, this gives the council, well, gives the school board, who will work with the council, several options on how to use those funds. One would be to expend those funds for items that we took out of the budget. A second one would be to put some of those funds into reserve accounts, either in existence or to be created, or to reduce the local appropriation. And as we did, you didn't ask this prior, but as we did three or four years ago, whichever year that was, I think it would be a collaborative effort on, if there was some combination of those things, how those funds would be allocated.
Then, your statement, who will work with the school board, meaning the council, should that be put into the motion?
I don't think it needs to be. This is a motion that, or this is an order that is commonplace amongst school districts. I think our record is that we've worked with the council all along. I don't think it needs to be put in there.
Okay. I'm fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you Superintendent Higgins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Councilor Phillips, Blanchett, Staller, and Waldorf couldn't have done a better job.
Chumming.
Chumming.
All right. Council Order Number 20, Agenda Item 20, Council Order Number 052108, request of the wastewater superintendent to accept a quote for repairs to the aeration blower located at wastewater treatment plant.
Hurry it, Mike. Good evening. Mike Harris, Ellsworth Wastewater Superintendent. Coming before you tonight, we have a aeration blower at the plant that has a failed core. It's been sent to Korea. They've sent us back a quote to fix it. Quote's $29,840. So I'm asking that the council approves us expending that amount of money to be able to fix the blower so we can get it back here because we need it.
So bottom line, you need this for the plant to work.
Correct.
You got no other choices, correct?
Absolutely. 100%.
Just going in $23 million right now.
I feel good coming up asking for $29. My budget, great. Everything's great this year for the wastewater. We're working.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the wastewater superintendent to get his blower repaired for $29,840.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Can't wait till next week, Mike.
Item 21, Council Order Number 052109, discussion in action on a proposal to change the start time of the council meetings to 6:00 PM, sponsored by myself. This has come up in terms of trying to make this meeting a little more convenient for attendance for the public, for city staff, especially as these agendas can drag on. And almost all other, and I believe all other committees and commissions, their start time begins at 6:00. So wanted to raise it with this council to see if there was an interest in doing that or not. I realize that nothing's perfect, and we may lose some people on the front end, but just wanted to bring it for a discussion on that.
I think years ago, that was set at that. In a traditional world, it was an eight-to-five operation that would allow those that worked to finish their day, change, and get over here at a reasonable time. It also allowed people that wanted to attend the meeting the same opportunity. So maybe life has changed, but I think that's why it was set that way, and that's why it's been that way forever and a day. The opportunity of the meeting is of importance to allow people the time to finish their work day and then arrive here at a reasonable time, be it ever.
Sometimes I'm pretty fortunate to get here by seven, but I'll just make a different arrangement if it's necessary, but.
So you being a traditionalist, it would be more difficult for you to be here at 6:00?
No, it'd be more 7:00. I say, sometimes I don't even get done work until 6:00, so.
Back when I was encumbered by work, I had the same issue.
Yeah. I get a less encumbered myself, but I'm good whatever way it turns out.
I'm fine with it either way, but I'm leaning towards, you know, why fix it if it ain't broke, as the phrase goes. It also would cause our, the employees that come to the meetings for whatever the reason may be, some of them just to stay over, you know, rather than giving them a chance to go home and grab a bite to eat, it would add to their workday.
I wonder how the employees would actually, maybe they'd rather stay over and at the same time, I, you think they would rather?
No, they do. We all.
Right.
We're in this room stayed from the end of our day and just.
I'm just wondering, then they'd be home an hour early, so.
Yeah. Also depends on how the meeting goes.
Putting myself behind, I mean, putting the employees above myself, I think it would be better to go at 6:00, so I guess I got mixed emotions about it.
I'd be curious to see what the other folks in the room might think about it.
Yeah.
They were all shaking their heads.
Yes.
Councilor.
I was just wondering what the general consensus was, Glenn.
Well, so, yes, the concept came up at one of our department head meetings, management team meetings, and the question was just raised because, again, all of the other city planning board, all of the other commissions, they all meet at 6:00. Our budget meetings were all scheduled for 6:00, and someone just said, well, why is the council meeting at 7:00? And I had no good answer for it, and so I brought it to the finance committee to just, you know, see if they, I thought perhaps there was a, you know, a reason or justification specifically dictating 7:00. The thought process was, as we all sat here through many of these meetings in the last several months that have gone till 9:00, 10:00 at night, the thought was we start at 6:00, we're getting out at 8:00 instead of 9:00, and honestly, I thought it might be something that appealed to the council. So that's where it came from. I speak for myself, and I know that at least three of the city staff sitting here, you know, we stayed at the end of our day for the meetings, whether they started at 6:00 or 7:00.
I'm assuming that would be unanimous if they were all sitting there.
The other department heads, yeah. Most of them are gonna stay, not, they might run out to get a quick bite to eat, but they're not gonna travel all the way home and then turn around and come all the way back to work for a 7:00 meeting.
I think I'm not gonna be selfish. I'll just do it at 6:00.
Can we change this in the middle of a stream? We voted on this at the organizational meeting in November.
Yeah. Start with that till November.
I don't know the answer to it. I don't know if we can do that or not outside of the rules. I think that's the place when we adopt rules.
Right.
So it may not be able to.
You said you supported it both ways. I thought I was sitting next to John. I feel strongly both ways about that.
No, that's Yogi Bear.
So given this, and actually, if somebody would make the motion to table it, it would give some time maybe to hear from the public as well, because I think, Councilor Phillips, you make a good point that we don't want to prevent the public from participating either. And it'd be great to hear from people in the community of what their thoughts are. So maybe if we table it, we can get that other question answered as well and discuss it at another time.
Do we need to table it so we can bring it back 35 times until?
No, we could just not deal with it. We can just, if there's no motion, we move on.
Next.
I'd make a motion, no motion. So to speak.
I move to table it. I think it's important.
Okay. So we have a motion to table?
One night a week.
Second.
Second. All those in favor to table? All those opposed?
If it doesn't work out, we won't be here with the board.
Right?
Looks like it was unanimous. All right. Item 22, Council Order Number 052110, discussion of potential action on summer use of downtown parking spaces. This is sponsored by me. You heard earlier a little bit about some changes being made downtown for some green spaces and access. So this is all part of this discussion, is to make sure that the community is aware of that request, as well as there's some other things happening to maybe free up some parking spaces, access. We fully anticipate a very busy summer, and we have limited parking, and we certainly want all merchants to be able to have patrons find parking space to be able to go and visit their stores. So it's kind of a collaborative effort, and wanted to just put this on the table, so. Do you, Mayor Moser, you want to start with just repeating what you?
Sure, yeah. So the Franklin Street situation is something that we broached last summer with downtown merchants to look towards creating a space where restaurants could expand into the outdoors based on the COVID requirements. And we received interest from the downtown merchants, but it just never got pulled together, and the city at the time didn't have any funding to stand it up, so it just kind of fell flat. Well, coming into this season, we were anticipating, you know, that there were going to be heavy restrictions still placed on our restaurants, and there was still a lot of talk and a lot of motivation within the downtown merchants to see this space created, not only for dining, but just an outdoor gathering space for shoppers can sit down and take a break, you know, they can look at what they've just, you know, purchased in many of the stores, and just be somewhat of a gathering spot for the folks who are in the downtown to enjoy. And so through conversations with myself and Lisa Suklevich, as well as Jana Richards, we began the planning stages and putting together finances of what we would need. There was money that was set aside specifically by this council for the city to utilize for, to benefit businesses that have been negatively impacted through COVID. So we basically expanded upon the idea to close down Franklin Street. Picnic tables have been made by the city employees. There's been purchased for barricades, stone planters, and whiskey barrel planters. A lot of plants and the ingredients to create all of that have been largely donated. And so the hope is that on the 24th, those will be set in place, and picnic tables will be brought in, umbrellas, and just to open up a nice gathering location right in the center of town for visitors, locals, people to utilize. And the plan is to gauge and see what the utilization is, see, you know, how much actual activity is in that space, and then move forward with the future to decide whether it was a valuable endeavor or if it was something that was, didn't make a whole lot of sense in the end, so.
Council Captain.
What happens after the businesses close down at night? Is that gonna be just still open to be used?
Yeah, so we won't close it. Of course, we, the area is, does have surveillance, video in the parking lot, so, you know, it'll be, it'll be watched over. Law enforcement will keep, you know, keep close tabs on it as well. But, yeah, it'll continue to be available for people to utilize.
Is it well lit at night?
Uh, decently.
The umbrellas have lights in there.
And the umbrellas do as well, yeah.
Council lights.
How many, like, businesses? You talked to every business, and they all think it's a good idea, or are there some that say, yeah, no, or?
Yeah, so we haven't gone around and polled all of the individual businesses. Most of our conversations have gone through the heart of Ellsworth, and everyone that I've had any sort of contact with or heard any sort of feedback from is all positive.
Yeah, I was just wondering where some restaurants might be closer, and others might, they might feel disadvantaged.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the understanding is that all restaurants, it's really a takeout facility. It's not, you know, it's not any rest, one particular restaurant specific, so anyone can take their takeout from any one of the number of restaurants on Main Street or High Street for that matter, and have a place to go and dine outdoors. And, you know, as we have been very fortunate, and the COVID restrictions seem to be lightning, you know, but there's still that population, there's still that, you know, those people, numbers of people who still, although the science tells you otherwise, aren't necessarily going to be comfortable going inside restaurants and be, especially if they're crowded. So this just continues to offer that availability to people to be able to be outside.
Do you know if there will be a hotspot there for internet access?
Yes. We do not have bathrooms, so.
Council Miller?
Yeah, Darren Goldstein from Providence is having trouble joining us. He was trying to join us via Zoom, but his Wi-Fi isn't working properly. And he just plans to open up the two parking spots in front of his restaurant on Memorial Day, I believe, after that for outdoor dining, but he will be serving them. It's not to go, he'll be serving them. I think that's basically what he wanted to say.
Yeah, so I've had conversations with Darren early on, early on before the final plans for this Franklin Street thing really came through, and had granted him authority, authorization to do what he did last year for dining outside of his restaurant on the sidewalk. And the importance of that for his restaurant is it expands his ability to offer that seating. It's a much different experience because it's table, you know, it's table service as opposed to here, take your food in a box and go eat at a picnic table. So it's, you know, an altogether different experience for the diner, different service for the restaurant, and he felt it was important to be able to continue to offer that outdoor seating, you know, again, based on people's concerns with being inside in an indoor setting with large numbers of people, and for the impact that, you know, the two parking spaces, which are directly in front of his restaurant, which serves only dinner at this point, adds to the rest of the downtown area is, for parking wise, is fairly minimal, and I felt that the benefit to his business was worth the interruption. And the reason for him taking up the two parking spaces is purely safety. He could do the same seating without actually impeding traffic or taking those two parking spaces. That was actually initially my request, because I didn't want diners to be sitting there at the edge of the sidewalk and, you know, have someone trying to parallel park right next to their table and inadvertently, you know, end up hitting, you know, potentially hitting someone there. So that's why the request was made, that they create some sort of barrier and prevent anyone from parking in those spots to prevent any sort of potential accident from happening. And the other, you know, other impediment to parking that we've had requests for throughout all of the season, last year and into this year, is Fins has requested that they had, they requested several months ago to put signage out, designated parking for their specific takeout pickup, and we granted them permission to do that with the understanding that it's not enforceable. So the signs, you know, read that Fin, parking for Fins pickup or whatever, but anyone can park there, and, you know, they're not gonna be towed or told to move or anything like that. It's strictly just a courtesy thing, and people generally seem to be pretty mindful about it.
So I certainly don't raise the issue in terms of, thought it was important to talk about. I think going into next summer, that's certainly a different time, and parking is pretty limited, and we, I think we all want the merchants to do as great business. Part of that is making sure people have access. I know that the city's having some discussions to maybe free up some spaces in the city parking lots for employees and maybe some other businesses so that that can be leveraged and have some parking available downtown. So I think there's a, there's a good group effort, and I think the merchants are all aware of what's going on downtown and supportive of it. But certainly going forward into next year, that could become problematic if every business wanted to take two spots, and then all of a sudden you have a problem. But I think, given the circumstance, we're still on the fringe of the pandemic, and it's a good way to support businesses. Any other comments? Item 23, Council Order Number 052111, request of the city manager to confirm, this is where I should have read ahead, the appointment of Scott Gilroh. Did I pronounce that close?
Yep.
As Fire Chief and Director, Emergency Management for the city of Ellsworth. I'm pretty sure he's listening, and I apologize if I get your name wrong.
Yes.
Yes, so I'm very pleased to be able to announce tonight that Mr. Giloraw has accepted the position as Fire Chief for the city of Ellsworth. I had the pleasure of meeting he and his wife last week. We spent a few hours together exploring ideas and plans for the future and explaining a lot of the, providing a lot of the historical information about the fire department. He was able to spend time with Gary as well. Unfortunately, there were.
Extenuating circumstances.
Extenuating circumstances outside of our control that prevented him from spending a lot of time with the actual firefighters themselves and personnel, but he did see and have the opportunity to talk to many of them. He's very excited about the opportunity to return to Maine. He's originally from the southern part of the state, Old Orchard Beach area. He has a daughter and grandchildren who live in Newport, so very close to the Ellsworth area, relatively close. And he and his wife are very excited about the opportunity to move back to the state that they refer to as home. They're returning from South Carolina, Beaufort, South Carolina, where they currently live, and he is a firefighter paramedic there for the county of Jasper. Different type of makeup of firefighting, but as far as the department goes, but firefighting nonetheless, and he has thirty-plus years of experience in the fire service, including some time spent in Maine, in Gardner, and Southern Maine, somewhere in Southern Maine where he started as a volunteer. In his current role in Jasper, he, one of his subsidiary duties, aside from the firefighting and paramedic duties that he has, he's responsible for the recruitment, retention, and organization of their volunteer fire service in Jasper County. So he has a lot of experience to offer in that world, and I think he's gonna be a fantastic addition to the fire department, and so I hopeful tonight that we will confirm his appointment.
When would he start?
June twenty-first.
Oh, sorry.
No, he's, his last day of work in South Carolina was scheduled for June third, and then he has obviously plans and moving and relocating and things that need to transpire, so.
Does Beaufort have an ambulance service?
Yes, he's a paramedic, so he actually. He has a fair amount of experience in that world, yes.
Just one thing, I'm sure that Scott is watching, and I just want to tell him that as I sat in on the second Zoom interview with him and listening to him, his dog interrupted two or three times, and it broke his train of thought at the time. The dog got into the room somehow, and I got kind of a chuckle out of it, so I will agree to vote for his appointment tonight, but only on the condition that he brings his dog in and I can meet him. Scott, you have your marching orders.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to confirm Scott. Giloraw is the Fire Chief for the city of Ellsworth.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item twenty-four. Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? There was no, there was no, it was informational. There was no action. We're adjourned.